Thanks for calling the meeting. Meeting to order. All right. Let's get started with our roll call, Sarah, if you can do that.
Bob is not here yet.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
You about to?
Here. Okay. Um. Next on our agenda is approval of the of the agenda. Are there any things that anyone would like to comment about, add right at this time? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented for the September twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Jim Boe. Uh, I'll second that. And I lose track of when we eye and vote nowadays between the, this isn't an eye, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Say it. Okay. When we were on Zoom, you always had to vote, right? Okay, um. Next item is the approval of the minutes. We have a couple of of regular meeting and a special meeting minutes that we have not had recent zoning board get togethers to do so. So the first one is the under A, section three approval minutes is the March fourteenth regular meeting. Um, is between. I have no, I have no changes to those minutes. Do either of you have any comments or changes?
No.
Review them both, they look fine.
Okay, I think we should probably approve one at a time.
You can do both.
Can you do both at one time? All right. Uh, and then, all right, then I'd be is the March twenty eighth special meeting minutes, and I also have no edits or changes to that. Any one of you?
No.
No.
Okay. So.
I would move if, if, if in order, I would move approval of the March fourteen twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes and the March twenty eight twenty twenty four special meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, I'll in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved for the March fourteenth and the March twenty eighth meetings. At this time, we open the, uh, meeting to any public comments you may have. They can be general. Uh, anything you'd like, anyone that would like to make any comments, we welcome you and okay, please state your name and who you are and um, all that good stuff.
Yeah, Ethan, Ethan, Ethan Barty. Uh, property owner in the township and in the city, all over the city. Uh, the reason why I'm up here today is I I have some long term history with this property that I just want to share with you. My daughter's twenty six right now. When she was five or six years old, she went to a tea party that was at a a place that she had a sleepover with. The girl's parents owned it. And they're like, oh, yeah, it's a, you know, resort motel and we use it from time to time and we run it out short term. And I thought that was odd, it was before I I managed quaint cottages, it's before we did vacation rentals. And I'm like, oh, this is, you know, really cool, you know, cool motel, um, resort and a nice opportunity for my daughter. And that was over twenty years ago. She's twenty six now, that was when she was like, I think, five or six years old. Um, so, um, the subject party, uh, property, um, that is in discussion tonight. I've always known it to be as such, a motel, um, resort. Um, fast forward a few years, my wife's in real estate. Um, we were getting into property management. And, um, the current owner was losing it to the bank. The bank came to us and said, you know, it's a workout group and they said, hey, can you help us sell it? So my wife, Tammy Kerr, um, had the opportunity to try to sell it and it didn't sell right away. And they, um, came to us and said, oh, I see you had a have quaint cottages, a a rental company. Um, during this process, you know, how about we rent it short term like it always has been rented, um, as a motel resort? Um, and, you know, get some cash flow going, you know, so for the bank, you know, they're they want cash for the bank.
Yeah.
And so we, we looked at it and said, you know, because it had been stripped from a lot of furniture, um, all the sheets and towels. Um, and you want consistent stuff, so we literally drove all over the state of Michigan to try to get matching towels at Target. This is early on in the game, we didn't know a lot about vacation rental and and motels at the time. And, um, so we, we, um, shortly got that going and getting it started. Um, and then, um, she brought, um, a buyer, um, who happened to be, um, Cheryl um, and and Dino, uh, to the table. Um, and, um, they ended up purchasing the property, um, as a motel, um, resort. And so I just wanted to share that history that I know, um, with you of it. Um, you know, full disclosure, you know, Dino is a friend of ours, um, but it's how real estate happens too, and that's, you know, Tammy put it out to her friends and and, um, actually, I didn't know you that well back then, I probably know it too well now. But, um, just want to share that with you, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tammy Kerr, I'm the real estate agent and Ethan's wife. Um, I have a long history on this property, it goes back twenty some years. So I also sit on ZBA, so I thank you guys for the township, but I thank you guys for your support and all the work you do. But, um, with this property, the original owner, Dean Borland, who actually turned this into condos. The only reason he had to turn it into condos was because at that time, there were no banks that would um, refinance the property under the current commercial zone. So he had to turn them into condos to refinance it individually. And that's because at that time, the banks were super difficult to deal with, and that was the whole reason that he did it. There was no reason for him other than that, he was not ever going to sell them separately, he was never going to rent them as STRs, he was going to keep it as a motel. And he's been my client also for many, many years. So we did take it over, we managed it as a hotel, I sold it to Cheryl and Dino as a hotel. Um, they got a commercial SBA loan on it. They did everything correctly. I even called the city to make sure that it was a motel and the SBA also had to make sure that it was a motel, otherwise they went loan on it. So I just have a really hard time that we're even here discussing it because I feel like it's been in front of the city for many, many years and they've all known what it is. And they've all known the reasons why it's had the difficulties it's had, going from, you know, a motel to condos and never being anything but a motel. So the current use has always been a motel for as long as I've known, which has been over twenty years, like twenty six years. So I just wanted to let you all know that, thank you.
Thank you, and you also submitted a letter, uh, earlier, so we do have that on our record. You know.
Question, are we gonna just back and forth talking?
You, you can, you, you can, you might want to wait and and do your, your talk to us, there's a, as the applicant, you would want to tell us your story when we get, when we go to that, okay? It's, this is, this is a little more like anybody wants to talk, you know, we, we will ask again if there's anybody who wants to speak before and after, but public comment is public comment, you can talk what what you want there at that part, so, okay? So there's no one else online for comments other than Jake, which I don't think he has any public comments. So, um, let's move on to, uh, item number, uh, five, which is unfinished business and we uh, shows no unfinished business, so that means we've been doing something. Not lately, but, and have, have you guys all met Luke?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had them all met, so I just want, I didn't know, I know you know Sarah, but I wasn't sure if you'd met Luke, so I didn't. Okay, so let's go to item number six, which is new business. And that brings us into this five sixty Campbell Road, um, which is as our agenda reads, it is a change of nonconforming use of the subject property to a different nonconforming use, which is on our packets and page twelve, as we were talking earlier. And, um, and then we also have one other item, so what we'd like to do is, uh, call the hearing to order. And at that time, I would like to ask our zoning administrator for a review or summary of what they have put together for us, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, in front of us tonight, we have an application from five sixty Campbell Road, also known as the Secret of Sorgetuck Suites. The applicant states that since two thousand eleven, they've been operating the property as a motel. However, after formally requesting a land use determination from the zoning administrator, it was identified as a legally nonconforming multifamily dwelling. The applicant is requesting a change of nonconforming use or substitution um, from multifamily dwelling to motel. And they are here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Luke. So, uh, the next thing would be, at this time, the applicant, uh, you know, if you would like to present, again, introduce yourself and give us, uh, any information you would like to put forward.
Okay.
Prior to us going in any discussions.
Okay, Dino Tadaldi, five sixty Campbell Road, and I'm Cheryl's partner. And, uh, just to give you a little history on the property, uh, my parents owned it, uh, just after Lloyd J. Harris built it. And at that time, it was rentals during that period. Had a couple owners since, had some additions put on. And after the additions so forth put on, it was then put into foreclosure due to the lack of solubility of the property. The units are all intertwined, uh, there's four electric bills, four water, or one water bill, four gas bills. Everything is intertwined, when I say that electrical, if someone blows a breaker, they might have to come up to my unit to do it, to, uh, reset the breaker. Not each unit, it's individual capsules. If they're all intertwined together, we do have interior corridors. Uh, a lot of what we're trying to figure out is what we actually are, we fit many boxes and we don't fit many boxes in the zoning things. And after it was in the foreclosure, when we went to buy it, we researched the property, and I am a real estate appraiser for over thirty years in this area. After researching the property, the city told us it was a motel, it was an N, it was commercial property. Our appraiser went through there, he determined the same thing. We met with the assessor, I don't remember who the other assessor was prior, who was just released a year or two ago. But we had to sit down with her and she said, yeah, you guys are a hotel, putting y'all on one, uh, parcel number. And I believe that's how we flew under the radars, we run one parcel number under units one through twenty. And she combined all of it, said, you're a hotel, you're not selling individually, we're gonna keep you that way. So everything to this day still in the city records and county records say hotel motel. It still says commercial in your, in your documents. And that's what we've gone on, when we bought the property, it was advertised as a motel. That's what we got into. It's been operating since Dean Borland did it in two thousand one, I believe, as a motel. And we took that use at that time and continued doing it. Uh, but when we took it over, there was a lot of things going on. And those things where they were renting weekly to bartenders, waitresses, and it was a big party spot along to other guests coming to town. I'm very familiar with Mark Becken, one of my neighbors. When we bought it, he jumped for joy. He hasn't had any issues whatsoever, we're onsite owners, we live onsite, we take care of everything. We do have an office onsite, we've operated as a hotel, and we'd like to continue that use. Nothing has changed, everything's still the same, we've updated it and so forth. Our major concern is if our use gets changed or if somehow we term that we are a short term rental with the competing properties out there, and you guys know specifically, the increase in Sagatuck with its short term rentals has gone up, our occupancy has gone down. We are a short term, short term, not a full short term rental. When I say that, we are not equipped for more than three nights. We have one property, one unit onsite that's good for a week. Everything else, you're not gonna want to stay in these units for more than three, three nights. Uh, anyone who's gonna be paying three, four hundred dollars a night, they're just not equipped for it. That's where the short term rentals in town take over and they're a better, uh, better choice, they're larger, they're easier comfortable. And we really have hotel rooms, they have tiny kitchenettes in them, small refrigerator, small everything. They're just not set up for long term housing. Uh, we do have in the off season, some weekly renters, monthly renters that we put in there. And it's only temporary, these are people that have lived on boats, that, uh, one of our clients, he lives in Lansing, he's the VP of the company, and he doesn't want to live in Lansing, he has to be there three days a week. And he lives with us on the off season, uh, week to week as he needs and his company pays for it. But all the units we have are just, they're not large short term rentals, they don't qualify as short term rentals. And if I look at the determination, uh, that was made a year ago in September by, I believe it was a city attorney, that, uh, basically noted us as the, we're currently not subject to short term rental zoning regulations, and that was in your minutes from a year ago. And there's a full page document in our assessor file also from the city attorney stating that we are not a short term rental. So I don't know what has changed since then and why now it's an issue. And the only reason we were brought up before is someone had inquiry about one of our properties is a short term rental, and the city addressed it without even letting us know and declined them, said, no, it's not a short term rental, our attorney has already determined that. So that is what we're currently doing. We're the kind of owners you want at a place, we do live onsite, we take care of everything. So, and you can ask our neighbors, I believe there's a few letters in our file from our neighbors stating that we're a good neighbor to have. We are not the house, we bought a business, we didn't buy a house and try to turn it into a business. We bought business. And that's what we need to continue operating as, and that is our business model. By going a route that we would be short term rentals, the amount of equity we would lose is substantial, is our retirement, and that would be gone. And how did we get here? There's a lot of reasons we got here, and this was just discovered. So I'd like to see what we can do to bring it back to what it was and let us continue to do business the same way. And I think if you look at your records, there are really no issues with way we've done things, and we do also hold a business license with the city. Anything else?
All right.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Many, Carol, you're, okay. Because at this time, I will, we may have questions later.
Okay.
As we'll, we'll go into our own, our own private discussion here in a minute, you know, and, um, but I want to make sure that, um, we also have, uh, public, there's been also some letters that have been submitted. The ones that I recall reading, one was, of course, from Tammy. Uh, there was one, of course, from, uh, Mark Becken, right?
Yeah.
Were there any other ones that you guys received recently or any other letters that, that were, uh, submitted that you know of?
I don't know of any letters that were included.
Or anything, sometimes you get between the day we got the packet and now.
I haven't seen any.
Okay, okay.
There should have been two more, uh, from our neighbors. Uh, from Mark Haven, who's our neighbor to the west.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Yep.
We requested those because they are residents, so actually, they're.
Sorry, I do remember that now.
The other one, of course, is short term rentals, I don't think they have much to say at all. So we just wanted to close the city, there is, I lived there full time, I've been a while, I'll click up my back. Well, Mark Haven and Sean Oliver.
Yeah. And they were all in favor of basically, uh, the application of, of the direction of the application, they had no no real complaints, all compliments that I read as far as noise and no parties or basically and things like that, um, that they were in, in, in favor of of the, the change of, potential change of nonconforming use. So I don't know if you guys, uh, had anything else, but if no one else really had anything to say, what we would like to do at this time, well, we'll go to what we call our closed session where we start discussing amongst ourselves, where we see if we have questions, we may ask you to comment if we're, have a question. So in order to do that, I would start with, uh, any of the board members that uh, have had a chance, I know we've, uh, well, to start with a little bit is, you know, this is kind of a long process one from what I can see. And, you know, starting into the review of a determination by our Ryan Cummins, our, at that time zoning administrator, uh, who looked at it and made a determination that it was a, a multiple family dwelling based on, you know, based on criterias that was in there, which kicked this off. And then as things progressed, I guess you might say, and other zoning experts that the city has looked into things, came in with a potential situation here where, uh, and I've been on the board for over twenty some years, I've never had a situation where we are looking at a uh, a change of nonconformity where there is a potential of in our bylaws or in our ordinances that we can look, the board has a right to look at that if we feel it it is, deems itself worthy of changing and nonconforming use. So it falls under a few different rules, rather than our typical dimensional setbacks or lot coverage or general use, as in, you know, we want to make this a, we want, we want to change this district or this area to a bar, that kind of a general use. So, um, it's a little new to us, a little somewhat, but, uh, also has potential of us being able to look at it in a different way than our, our general set of rules, right?
Yes.
Because our standards are different that we look at here. So, I don't know, Jim, do you have any comments on where we're at with this?
This, as, as Bob had said, this is a very interesting one, because this is the first time we've ever had a situation where you're changing from one legal nonconforming use to yet another legal nonconforming use. And it got further confusing because the zoning regu, the zoning map shows that there is a PUD there, planned unit development, which there is not. Um, one was requested, but it was never approved according to our attorney, and I appreciate them researching that because if it was a PUD, it couldn't come before this board, it'd have to go to planning. So this, this one had a lot of, a lot of, uh, things going on in it. Uh, I completely understood how Ryan Cummins did his analysis, he was very thorough, he was very detailed, and I understand how he came to the conclusion that it is uh, a multifamily dwelling, it would, based on everything available, the court cases, those things, it showed that. So that's how you got my understanding of how we ended up with the current legal nonconforming use of multifamily dwelling. Um, based on the history of everything that's going on here, based on your location, based on the business, based on how the business is run. In, in my review, it meets all of the requirements for, we'll have to go through these one at a time, but it meets all of the requirements for this change from one legal nonconforming use to another. We'll, we'll go through those one at a time and, and express our opinions on those, but at the highest level, I think it, it meets all of those, so.
So, yeah, and Rich, I know if you have some more comments to expand on that, but basically it's saying is we agree with where we're at, at this point, that it, that it, we, we can look at this and, and then go through the standards, so.
Well, I, yeah, and I don't want to is, is, you know, I was telling Luke when we talked, I don't want to muddy the waters, I'm basically in agreement, this seems quite clear to me, uh, after going through all the, all these documents, that there's some things that are relevant here and some things that aren't as relevant as they first appear, and I think though that, I think it meets all these requirements. I'm still a little bit, uh, and, and so that, that's my belief, but I, I, I noticed in here, uh, you know, and I understand this has been reviewed by our professional planner. And in terms of the ZBA authority, it says the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act allows the city council to assign the ZBA other duties through the zoning ordinance other than considering appeals, interpretations and variance requests. Uh, public hearing, I, I, uh, allows the city council, did we get it, I, I don't recall seeing any directive from the city council per se on this, or can we, how do we?
I can probably speak to that, there is a specific mechanism in the zoning ordinance that authorizes the ZBA to evaluate and approve or deny a substitution in use. Um, so that's, that's not, uh, i- it's not so much like the city council is, you know, telling you directly, hey, do this thing, but the, the city council enacted the zoning ordinance and there are additional duties in there beyond the, the duties that you mentioned earlier that would, that would come from the, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act.
Okay, so it's, it's implicit, uh, in the Enabling Act itself that it, that we have that power to do that, okay? All right, thank you.
In the, in the Enabling Act and in the city ordinance, the, the Enabling Act allows the city to put an ordinance in place to allow us to do that. And the city ordinance says, we may change a legal nonconforming use to another.
Okay.
Lot of, a lot of research went into this one.
A lot of research went into this, it's.
Um, my other, uh, so does this take care of the, this, of the, the problem, does, uh, I can ask the applicant that perhaps, or, you know, the zoning people here that are working, this essentially takes care of the problem that you're looking to take care of, correct?
We believe so, it's just, we aren't sure what correction to come in, because we're not totally sure. But, uh, whether we determine that we are, you know, more, or, or however you want to put it, depending what you come up with, we can determine if it's going to work or not. I'm not fully, like, I'm not fully, you know, confident with the process that I'm going. So I'm looking to you guys for advice.
Well, if it's approved, you're, you're requesting, my understanding, may I address them, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
My understanding is, the request is that it be classified as a motel, which is a, which would be another legal nonconforming use.
Yep, that should solve it.
So if that's approved, that takes care of everything you need.
Okay, that was my, you know, I, it's no sense approving something that doesn't take care of what you need.
Or they don't understand that, yeah, but it takes care of them.
We can press them, but I believe we're headed in the right direction.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
All right, yeah, I. All right, thanks. All right, so, so what we have is basically we, uh, under this, under this, uh, ordinance standard that we can review, we actually have two different things that we need to read and comment and, and have our thoughts processes to, to make some kind of a determination and emotion one way or the other. So typically, we have four standards, on this one, we have two, two. So Jim, would you like to maybe read that one and we go through number one?
Certainly. The proposed use does not increase the degree of nonconformity existing prior to the change of use. Pursuant to this standard, the proposed use shall not create or result in impacts which are considered more objectionable than the used to be replaced. These impacts shall include, but are not limited to, increased traffic, truck deliveries, parking requirements, hours of operation, noise, vibration, odors, litter, outside storage, pedestrian movement, offsite drainage, and other factors. And the comment is, although not determined to be a motel, operations are intended to stay the same. The applicant desires an official substitution to be considered a motel. Traffic impact is not anticipated due to a substitution. And the seasonable fluctuations of tourist stays would remain similar. Delivery, traffic, parking, pedestrian movement and potential external effects of the multifamily use and motel use have compatible impacts. The impacts on infrastructure and utilities for both uses are similar. So my understanding is that, uh, given that they are operating exactly as they have in the past, there is no increase in the degree of nonconformity and this standard is satisfied.
I would say, based on, based on the out, the outline, it, it does, it's very easy to, to re- relate to all those different things that it's not word for word, but it's, you know, when you have to do a comment and you read what, what you have your guidelines, uh, I don't see where there's any objectional, there's no objectional changes, there's, there's, you know, no impact changes that, that are changing, yeah, be it traffic truck, you know, and all these kind of things that were laid out in the, uh, in the ordinance. I don't know, I, I don't have a problem with a meeting standard number one, how about you, Rich?
No, I believe that standard number one has been met.
And additionally, the neighbors, uh, seem satisfied with the way the current operation is being conducted.
Yeah.
So, everything seems to favor approval of standard number one.
Okay. All right, uh, number two, Richard, would you like to do standard number two?
Uh, standard number two, no structural alteration of the existing structure will be required to accommodate the new use unless the alteration will bring the structure into greater conformity with the underlying zone district standards. Um, and then the, the comment is by the planner, um, no expansion, alterations or additions are required or proposed. The current and intended use of the property will be accommodated by the existing.
By the existing building. It should also be noted that the use will remain nonconforming, meaning that it can, can continue but cannot be, quote, enlarged, extended. Constructed, reconstructed, moved or structurally altered, except in changing the use of the structure. To a use permitted in the zoning district in which it is located. Uh, so I, uh, would believe that the, the proposal meets, uh, the standard number two in that regard.
Yeah, that, that, you know, deals a lot more with the, uh, you know, with the physical property, additions, expansions. Any kinds of, uh, enlargements. Now, the way we understand it and that many years, uh, that it's been, you know, at, at least. Probably at least maintained as you guys state, um, and up, up kept. But we're, you know, this isn't coming to us with some kind of a floor plan that says in order to make this. Uh, meet this requirement, we're gonna have to add on, or we're gonna have to go in and redo. The units or things that, that are required to meet this second. Uh, outline. It seems as though there's basically no change, what I. What I, what I understand and, and being around here long enough to understand how this is going. So again, that is a. My opinion, pretty clear that. That's not what's going on here. There, it's, it's just an as-is type of a situation, or as, as has been or as was and. Um, and it's my opinion, I think it meets those standards, those, that second standard.
I agree that it meets the second standard as well.
How about you, Mr.?
Yeah, well, I certainly, as, as I stated, I, I agree, yes. And then there's the, uh, this additional B here, I guess.
Yeah. I'll, I'll take that. Uh, under B is, in approving a change in the use. The board may require reasonable conditions in order to decrease the impact of adjoining properties. These conditions may include, but are not limited to buffers, landscaping, off-street parking. Access controls, hours of operation and other such conditions to reduce any negative impact. Well. They gotta put a forty-foot wall around that thing, don't they? Yeah, all sound insulated and.
Well, there's already a forty-foot or so bluff.
Yeah. First of all, nobody knows it's there. So, uh. Uh, comment of course from the Z B A has written was that, you know, we, we can discuss, you know, whether those, any of those conditions or approvals are appropriate. Who, you know, I, I guess this is where it's new to us as this type of a approval. Or denial, however you want to say it, but in this case, we're looking to approve based on our review of the standards. And, and what that's saying is if we were to approve this, is there anything you want to throw in on top to C Y A?
The only, the only comment I would have is if you're planning to change the signage or anything like that, that all needs to go through the process and be fully compliant. Um, there are no, there are no objectionable conditions noted by. Uh, complaints to the city or from your neighbors either one, so I, I don't see the need to add any conditions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, as far as, um. I, I, I personally find it kind of rare that there isn't something that just says, well, you guys gotta, you know. Put in high toilets or something like that and all these to make it work, uh, because, because it, it actually falls within, within the. Uh, standards that we looked at. I don't know what conditions, other things that, that have come up. That have been either negatives, um, or what we could sit here and say. Yeah, wouldn't it be nice, but there, I don't even know what you gain, because there's not really a change in, in the way it's been used or the way. It's, it's ran, let's put it that way, if that's another word.
Well, it, it has, uh, the buffers and the landscaping and the off-street parking and access controls, that's sort of irrelevant. Hours of operation are kind of built in, although, y- you know. Whether it's a motel or whether it's. A con- a residential condo, it doesn't make much difference. And the, the, the topography obviously is a bit of a limiting factor. On noise and, um. I am, you know, I keep trying to play the devil's advocate all the time. Uh. The only thing is, I, you, you know, th- this will exist long after even these good people are, and all of us are gone. And we always, you know, we don't know what the next set of owner operators might, might do there, but I, but, uh. I can't, uh, you know, as they say, these changes are not just for the immediacy, but for, you know. Down the road, twenty years, fifty years. Uh, but nevertheless, having. Wax philosophical about that, and still I can't come up with any particular need for any buffers. I haven't heard anything. From the most immediate, uh, neighbors, uh, the Vackens, for instance, uh. Or anything like that, people that would be in the know. So I, I can't think of any, uh, of any, uh, additions at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything in my crystal water glass either that, and down the road here that might work either. We, it's hard for us to determine the future of that, you know, the city changes, we, we all know that the last. Twelve months or less, of course, you know, we've had changes in our rentals and, and ordinances and things like that, so whatever comes, comes. Uh, all right, at that point then, um, I would ask if the, any of the members of the board were in a position to make a. Uh, a motion, uh, based on our review of the standards. And our facts, findings of facts that we have stated, and we.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the substitution of a nonconforming multiple family dwelling at five sixty Campbell Road. To a nonconforming motel based on the following findings. Number one, that it satisfies the standard number one for a change in. Uh, from one nonconforming use to another legally, both legal, and that it meets standard number two for changing one legal nonconforming use to another.
I don't see.
Is our attorney consider that sufficient, I assume?
Yeah, Jake, Jake heard that, he was shot saying yes.
I'm good with it.
Um, uh, Richard, would, you want to second it or?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not asking, forcing you to, I just asked.
No, not at all, I was just, uh, sleeping. Uh, uh, I second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussions further before we go to vote?
Hmm, I think we've covered it very thoroughly.
Okay, then Sarah, then I would like to ask for a vote on the proposal and the motions.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we have, we have approved five sixty Campbell change of a nonconformity. As presented.
Hope that helps. Hope it helps. And you, you still have to figure out how to get it rented and keep running and make some money. Thank you. Don't leave anything.
Leave your money here.
Watch your step down, going down the.
Yeah. Okay, um. Under new business, uh, we have item B, which is start time for Z B A meetings. Uh, if you happen to read. Ryan's information and Luke's, I should say, maybe both, I gotta start thinking that way, that, uh. Council has changed their meeting times to six thirty, and we had something like this, we had, we, we had an ask of this about a year ago also. And I know, I think we, I don't know if it was, I think it was similar, but we chose to just keep it at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, so they have gone to six thirty. Basically, uh, they're asking if we would like to do that, uh, make a change. Or choose a time, keep our time, or however we feel. I will say, I don't have too big of a problem with six thirty.
I, does six thirty help you two? Is that why we're doing this?
I, I think, yeah, well, I think the reason we're doing it is to. Have a little uniformity with city council being at six thirty. Maybe if we had all the meetings at the same time, it would. But of course, you know, planning commission is at seven, uh, we plan to introduce or, or ask them the same question next week. Uh, would you like to change the time? Historic district is at six, so that's probably going to be an outlier anyway.
They are.
I, personally, six thirty, seven, it's, it, the time is the time, it doesn't bother me, but in general, yeah, it's a little easier on staff, six thirty, I would say.
Yeah, I got no problem with six thirty. It's, yeah, well. You know, I had, will all of us just, no matter what we say, will wander up the stairs at seven and.
Yeah.
So, oh, I forgot.
Work, I wouldn't want to go much earlier than six thirty.
No, I, I, I wouldn't do that. That was our reasoning for not going, you know, I don't know, maybe at six at one time if we were asked, but. Um, I think six thirty would be as early as I would suggest people trying to get here who work, um. And.
Yeah, that's why it's been seven. But I could go with six thirty.
Well, um, I'll make a motion that, or that we approve the change of the meeting time for the Z B A. Uh, scheduled meetings to six thirty P M. These are on the second Thursday of the month, as I recall. Uh, from seven P M as originally. Structured. And you need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
So six thirty it'll be, huh?
Do we need to send reminders?
Yeah, I think I'll pull.
What's that?
Yeah.
So do we need to send reminders for?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, for the rest of those that aren't here, that's for sure.
Yeah, for sure.
All right, uh, number seven, communications, we. Generally for public communications or any communications other than we have our own internal coming up, so I.
Um, want to vote on that?
Oh, I said, I did the, I did the voice, but we have to do a formal?
Oh, you did it.
We did a voice.
It was unanimous.
Yeah, it was unanimous, yeah, sorry.
That's what I needed.
Yeah, three eyes have it. Our six eyes. Uh, so, okay, communications, I don't have anybody outside, inside that must make any comments. Other than we have our own.
Jake, you got anything for us?
Nope, you guys are doing great.
All right, thank you, sir. And then, um, so number eight is Z B A comments. And, um, I, my comment was, would be, if you have any others, that's fine, but I'll start with one. So when Luke called me today, right? Um. And as he's becoming familiar with our, our, uh, processes, and. I reminded him that we would need printed packets tonight. And of course, I knew it was seventy-three pages or, or whatever it comes out to.
Seventy-nine or something, yeah.
And, um, and, you know, in this case, we had the packet a couple of weeks ago, uh. And then, or prior, and then it got shifted, so, you know, then we just got the email, which, a link, which was fine. So basically where I'm going with this is two things. Years ago. When we, about a week in advance, we would, you know, make sure we're notified and we have the information. Technically a week before the meeting, um, and we would get a packet, hard copy. Delivered in mail or somehow we get a hard copy.
Yeah, the policeman would show up at the door with a packet for you.
Right, right, which now we have to, well, find a policeman around here nowadays, I guess. So, um. So the point is that. Every, everything has gone electronic and we all get our electronic files and some of us, like everybody, like, like to set at our laptop or our. Our big screen or whatever, phone and, and look at these, and which is fine, not going to get away from digital, I'm not, not trying to do that. But, so Luke, his comment was, well, if I'm going, and I said, you know, so we used to get it. I says, the problem is when you get something like this and you got double-sided. You lose track. And when you have all this, like you mentioned earlier, now, let's say I came in here today with. A package of double-sided, which is okay, but I could have my little tabs and notes where I'm at, that I reviewed at home, and I can kind of have. Some of my thoughts together in paper. So here, we come here and we. We have to rely on our memories or have a little iPad in front of you or something. So I, I'm just saying is. If he, he, no reason to print them twice. You shouldn't print them and deliver them and then print them when we come here. We used to bring them in, I guess, it could be that you. You, you lose it or forget it, but, um, the question comes down to is, should we go back to having printed copies? And we bring them to a meeting and also get electronic copy so we can have it digital, any way we want to review it. We're not cutting that out, you know, COVID went at all, everything went, went all paperless, uh, but we're not paperless now. And. It's just an open for discussion if you guys have any comments on it.
It, it would be helpful, and how about this? If we want a printed copy, we call up you and you print one off for us and we come and pick it up.
Absolutely, I mean, I, I was gonna say that if you're a man.
Not have a problem, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we don't feel like we're.
I do have people on other committees that call and ask for a printed packet. That is not a problem. They just, we noticed. Number one, a lot of people would leave them here, um, not in this group, but would leave them here, so we're wasting a ton of paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if they didn't want it, you know, council decided they would just all rather bring their tablets, laptops, and they would use those. Um, historic, kind of the same way, and then, um.
Planning.
Planning, they do the same, but I have two members that ask for a packet, so it's completely up to you.
So once it's launched digitally, you could pop in anytime and we're happy to print one-sided. So that we're not losing track and it is easier for keeping notes. No, I fully agree. When it comes to actually labeling things. Yeah, it's definitely one, one-sided is easier, so that is definitely something we can do.
Well, so then, you know, when you do come to a meeting, you, you know, it could be five pages and, you know, we don't, we don't. We, we may, we need an agenda, but, uh, if we don't bring, if we don't bring your comments or something like, if we don't have our, our. So it becomes a question is, if you deny that, do you print anything for the meeting? So if you say. I didn't require a package, and when you show up, what do you want in front of you?
I bring an agenda.
Oh, package.
Pardon?
We give out agendas, so you will.
If I didn't request a package, I would want one here in paper when I get here.
Okay.
But if I picked one up.
Uh, agendas for the public, so we always have agendas printed there and then we just usually pass them out and they'll ask for.
But you're saying is if you didn't request it, you're asking Luke to keep track of.
I mean, you guys usually get, uh, from what I can see today, you guys got here early. So if, if I misunderstood something or if someone asked for a packet and then they came without it, it takes two seconds to print off a new one. You know, no one's, no one's going to be asked to go into a meeting without.
Okay.
The information from.
I, I'm not trying to cr- create a lot of confusion, it's just that when you get a big one like this and it's two-sided and you're, and you're. And you're trying to come in and make sure, you know, all these different things, and then we get online and we see, we're looking up here, we're trying to find that on ours. And where's that survey and where's that, or, you know, we're back and forth.
Every, every, I just figured when I came on board here, this, well, it's the way they do it now, so.
Well, that's.
But it, it, that's, I, everyone that I've seen has had a problem with it.
Yeah.
Especially the new members, universally, they get lost in a hurry.
Yeah.
And I thought, well, jeez, I guess I maybe I'm not so stupid after all, but, uh. But yeah, i- i- it's a, it's a problem. I do hate to see us go to that much paper.
I know.
But, but, but there's no doubt that we, whether it's. You know, we need it in advance, you know, I called and got one earlier in the week now, and I really didn't need one tonight because I had mine. Which I should have probably. Now, and I really didn't need one tonight because I had mine, which I should have probably told you when I told you guys when I.
Cause that's kind of the get down to double work, but I guess that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's really, I, i- if you, if we do pick, maybe that's the answer though. It used to be the, the cops would deliver it, but I guess that's maybe gone by the boards, you know, and.
Went away with the cops.
No, we can't rely on that.
Although, uh, uh, well, it depends what city council you have too.
Yeah, true.
But I mean, if, 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 if the council felt that this is what it took to support the people that are on the boards, then I'd have it done. That, at least that would be a, be a high vote. But so, it's, it's available if we get, we can get it as early by just asking them, and it can be either two-sided or one-sided.
Otherwise, we'll plan on having them when we show up. All right. They're here when we show up. If we want one early, we'll get one.
One more comment.
Sure.
From me, it's a different, different subject. Some of these meetings and reviews are very complex. This was one of them. And I like to do a lot of research. And a week, would have been really pushing it to do everything that, that I like to do to go through this in detail, because I'll go all the way back to the zoning Enabling Act and see, do we have the authority to do that and follow it through and, um, I'll want to see, uh, surveys and recalculate floor area. I, I, I don't take anything at face value. For the straightforward ones, no problem, but for the complex ones, a little bit more notice would help us. An earlier package.
I, I could see, you know, the, the longer you have to review is definitely gonna be a more informed meeting. The nuances, you know, with an applicant, they're gonna apply and they're gonna assume that they can be on the meeting within a month, so we gotta publicly notice. We gotta get our planner all the information so we can get it back. So I, I can assure you that we're getting it to as fast as we can. Um, and we're trying to make sure that we're also not taking up months of applicants' time. In the case of tonight, it's very complicated, but, you know, if we push them out an extra month, um, and they're in a situation now where they can't rent, because that's their whole business model. Um, you know, in some cases that could be detrimental. So, uh, I'll definitely try my best to get it to you as fast as I can. But we will begin to when we can.
Okay.
Yep.
That's helpful.
And if I could say, you guys are very thorough. I feel like I over-prepared tonight because I only spoke the one time. I, I was ready to jump in. There was a couple of things where I was like, they're gonna ask a question. No questions. No, you already know the answers. So it was a fantastic job.
Well, these guys.
Well, yeah, you, don't, don't worry, we'll make mistakes.
Oh, yeah.
You, you keep track of us.
Well, I'm glad that you did prepare so thoroughly. Thank you to the attorney as well.
Yeah, please keep doing that. Yes.
Yes. Oh, yeah, don't quit. All right, public comments, uh, and we're gonna adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Urging adjourn.
Thank you.
Not a record.
Not a record.
But not drug out.
No, absolutely not.
That, uh, this one, this one was a, is the recording on?